Good evening.
You can't mess up.
I'd like to call the Eastline Board of Finance, special meeting budget review for Monday, March 30th to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I see a packed house tonight. We must have the Board of Ed here.
Must.
Okay. We'll move to delegations. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at delegations? Going twice for anyone in the audience. Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to old business. Any outstanding information? Did you put that on there, Anna?
I think that's just the carryover.
Okay. Do we have any outstanding information?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
We'll move to new business. Go ahead.
We were talking about bar graphs at one point, and we do have those prepared. I think we'll talk about that later in the meeting.
The debt schedule?
The debt bar that you're so familiar with over the formative years, that was prepared. I don't know if we're prepared to hand it out tonight. Yeah, the colored one? Are you prepared tonight?
We handed it out last year.
We can get them before the end of the meeting as we get down to the budget deliberations. Maybe I can hand that out to you when we take a break.
Yeah, we have one.
We have an updated one.
Oh.
Yeah.
Registrars, Department 110.
I've been having department heads come up to the podium as we are reviewing budgets, so I alone don't sit on the hot seat.
If we could just have your name and address for the record.
Nancy Moran, 143 Pennsylvania Avenue.
Good evening, Nancy.
So, the differences here, we've been talking when we were talking about our deliberations, was the, Nancy, if you'd explain some of the differences coming up in election day processes, proceeds, processes?
Well, the first one is-
Is that the word I'm looking for?
Is our phones.
Right.
The cost of the phones. When we first initially put this in, it was only forty, like forty-five dollars a month was the monthly bill. It has now gone up to eighty-one and eighty, what was it? Eighty-one and ninety-six a month. So that's why we, and we have to have phones at each polling site for a registrar and, or assistant registrar, and also for the HAVA line, which is a, the handicapped accessible phone, which is a fax machine. It's a dedicated line. So we have to have these, and we put in the price for the, the highest price was originally, you know, because we technically have to have two phones for each site at three sites.
You're talking landlines, right?
Landlines, yeah. They have to be landlines. But they can't be used for anything else except for this. So we do, a lot of times, turn them on and off. We weigh it when we have elections or primaries, what the, how long to leave them on for. We don't use them for referendums. We use our cellphones. We just have to have them for regular elections and primaries.
The other difference or issue is the fact that with Frontier taking over, there's a billing situation. It's much different when you go and cancel a landline, they still charge you for several months, or there's a minimum charge.
You're still charged a month, and then they reimburse you what, you know, you have to pay the full month, and then they'll eventually reimburse you a certain percentage of it. But it costs us per phone seventy-five dollars to turn it on and seventy-five dollars to turn it off.
Is the thirty-two-hundred that was reduced by the Board of Selectmen enough?
It might be.
We'll know if it's not, huh?
Right.
Yeah, you'll know. What we're gonna try to do is find, you know, because they do need several lines now because of same-day registration, all the stuff that's going on now with election laws. And Nancy mentioned the fax, dedicated fax line. But there are lines in that building, and we're wondering if we're gonna be able to share some of those lines on election days. Some of them we can't. Some of them have to be very dedicated, and we can't have calls coming in to the library on the same line, you know? But we might be able to figure out a way to do this, and so we thought if we reduce it a little bit and try to work within the building somewhere, we might be able to find a common solution.
Okay.
I reduced that line. I also reduced the convention conferences. It wasn't fourteen, I reduced it to a thousand, just based on history. That's about it.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board?
No questions.
Hearing none. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Smith-Harris House, Department 134.
Gary Lakowski, 12 Methodist Street.
Good evening.
You'll see, the curator is line 415. You'll see that is five thousand dollars. That was a curator that we put on a year ago, or just two years, two years ago now. That is covered in a revenue line with a five thousand dollar revenue as well. Does that need to be? We're gonna be increasing the revenue line on that. It's something we confirmed with Gary. So it's an even swap. They're collecting their, through grants, through donations, five thousand dollars, and they're spending five thousand dollars on the curator. So it's not an expense to the town. Really, that's it, other than the utilities. Of course, utilities are up, just all over. Telephone, electricity, it's just what it is. That's the only really bump in the, in their budget.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Any questions?
Just the curator. Didn't that used to be an appropriation in and then back out? How did we do it before? I mean, I can see it's different now, and that's fine, I'm just-
The reason we did special appropriations is because we had not included it in the budget when the commission came and requested that particular position. But now that we know, you know, it's been successful, and we have the offsetting revenue, we do include it in the budget.
Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Board of Finance, Department 126.
Our salary line is missing.
That's right. That's in contingency later.
We have a straightforward situation here. We put another five thousand dollars in for the auditing services, and Anna will explain why that is the case.
If, it's my estimate that if we do an RFP for audit services, that the fee will increase. So that would be at the pleasure of the board. If we want to do an RFP this year, we would need some form of an increase in the budget.
Okay.
Well, we haven't done an RFP in a while, right? So we should.
It's been about five years.
Yeah, so I understand.
Do you know how much that would cost in terms of putting out the request and manpower to process the information that comes back? Would it exceed the five thousand dollars? The posting in the newspaper?
It would come rather close, because we would need to analyze the RFPs, and then we would need to have a committee of board members, you know, to do the interviews of any finalists that we would have.
Now, do we have them under contract for this fiscal year?
The one that just ended, six-thirty fourteen. For this year, we would need to do an additional, you know, one-year extension with them.
Okay. Something for the board to entertain. We won't tell Scott until he comes back from the Water and Sewer Commission, though.
No, but I think you're right, Beth. If we have one in five years, it seems prudent to go out, not every year perhaps, but on some frequency.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll move on to General Government and Miscellaneous Benefits, 114.
You have, before you 114 budget, the glaring items of the workman's comp. We've had, we had several claims over the past couple of years, and that's catching up to us and our cost of insurance. You know, workman's comp is something that's somewhat unavoidable. We have safety days, and we have workplace safety campaigns, but people do get hurt on the job. We've had several at the police department and just all over town. So that's up. It's glaring. We have our health and dental care is up. We have not received final numbers yet. That's a floating number, as you know, until we get into just about the last minute, the eleventh hour, we'll have a better figure. We don't have anything different than for you right now. We're hoping to see a better number. I'll tell you-
Do you know when that number would come in?
I'm sorry?
Do you know when you would have a pretty good-
Anna?
At some point in April, we typically have that.
Do we have any expectations?
I'll tell you that we had a lot of claims. A lot of claims that made our one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar thresholds where we self-insure, and then it goes to the major medical. Policies, you know, we self-insure. Claims are way up. We had some severe situations in town with employees and/or spouses and family plans. So it is what it is. Health insurance is up. It's not going down. Hopefully, we can find, you know, a moderate increase at eight percent would be moderate these days in a typical company like the size of Eastline. We're at that place. We're just hoping to, waiting and see.
Have we explored, or at what point do we go off, I'll say, a standard one in self-insure and then reinsure at one-twenty-five? I mean, is that even an option?
We have a three-year plan with the ETNA plan, is that correct? It was a three-year-
Three-year contract, yeah.
It's a three-year contract. We're in, I think, year two right now. So this time next year, we'll be exploring our options for the following year.
Okay.
Is that true?
Next year, we're go, the fifteen, sixteen year will be year two.
Okay. So this was our-
Those are two years.
So this is our first year.
This is our first full year. My apologies. Wow. Okay. So we will explore that. You know, of course, you guys heard the CARE Here proposal months ago. That didn't, that didn't seem like an option. So barring trying to save money through a local clinic, we can keep on trying to shop the health market. I'll tell you, Mrs. Johnson went to, you know, Obamacare seminar for municipalities, and the, there's scary things looming out there, like the Cadillac surcharge coming up in only two or three years, which significant payments and penalties will, will be incurred by our town, based on the plan we have. So there, that's something we need to start working on as well. Once budget season's over, that's, that's the next big binder that I have to crack is start looking at, is our, is our health insurance, is exploring ways. As we negotiate with three out of the four unions from the, on the town side this year, it's something we have to look at, is trying to make, try to get to our health insurance to a place where we're not gonna be incurring such a massive surcharge.
Did we ever get, because we never had feedback after the health clinic, did we ever get any information from like Lawrence Memorial? I know somewhere we were exploring more locally-based.
Not to my knowledge.
We had some preliminary discussions, but that was, that was just preliminary.
All right. This is something, we'll bring it up after the budget season.
Yeah, I'm, there's probably a hundred different forms.
Yeah.
Everyone's making money off of the change in the Healthy Care Affordable Care Act. So I think there'll be a lot of options out there. But one, the new retirement liability that wasn't there last, what's, what's that?
Anna?
Are you talking about in the pension line item?
Yeah, retirement liability.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We were given notice of an employee that is going to be retiring in July, and that is the estimated payout that we will be facing. So we established an account for it as the depart, you know, the department just doesn't have a budget where, you know, they would be able to absorb that. So we put it in the townwide.
Okay, but we probably, if it's a, it will go into a different budget line, because you have zero increase on that, because it wouldn't, it's a new-
When the person, you know, does the paperwork and we do the calculation, we're gonna issue that individual a check for whatever the amount is at that point in time.
What is that for, like unused vacation days and?
Vacation, and then per the collective bargaining agreement, there will be a payout of sick leave on the books, a certain percentage of it, and so that's primarily what it's for.
These long-term employees can really devastate a local, a small budget. So this is kind of brilliant planning, if you will, so that it doesn't crush, we're not coming back, you know, midway through the year going, we just don't have an extra twelve thousand dollars anywhere. So it's a good place to put it, as a placeholder. We know this person is indeed retiring, and, you know, it's a significant longevity situation, so there's a lot of sick pay.
But don't we need to carry that across as a percentage increase? It's not-
What's the, you know, it's not an increase, it's, and that will vary. It will also vary next year as we're doing this budget, whether we have any advance notice if anyone's retiring. I mean, sometimes people just give us a two-week, and, you know, been with you thirty-five years, thank you, I'm leaving next week. And then we do have to absorb it, so.
So just out of curiosity, why wouldn't something like that be handled out of the payroll contingency line item?
It's something we could put there. We could have put it there. This just identifies specifically what it's for. Any other reason?
I just thought it was more appropriate to put it in this.
Yes, just to leave it there.
Because it's identifiable at this point, I guess.
Yeah, and the thing is with the contingency account, before we can utilize any of those funds, we need to go through both of the boards for authorization. So this way, we know this is coming up, and we've identified it, and we put it, put it in a line item.
Moving on, if you don't mind. Your legal services, or two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars for all departments. I'll bring up again, I just did, three out of the four unions are going into negotiation. One of them is a new union representing a bulk of our town employees. So we would expect, you know, a longer period of time of negotiation. So I have a fireman's contract, we call Council Four, which is our town hall employees and our public works employees, which is the largest one, and also dispatchers are all coming up. So I anticipate significant legal fees with that. Also, we received a, an application of the zoning commission for eight-hundred-and-fifty some own apartments at Oswego Gachi Hills by the Landmark Development Group. We've been down this road before, it's significant, it's transcripts, it's, it's lots of lawyers and lots of, you know, deliberations and public hearings, et cetera. Also, we got notice today that Costco has signed their lease with the development group out at Gateway, so we'll be seeing them come before our zoning commission. And that will be maybe significant. They'll be going in front of inland wetlands, more than likely, planning and zoning, so we'll need legal representation at all those events as well. Two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand is what we, is just a notch over what we asked for last year, but we are also running quite short in our budget this year on a percentage basis. So two-sixteen is a fair number. Under Services, unemployment compensation, again, that's the biggest item that jumps out, as well as the insurance part, which is fifteen percent. But, but the unemployment compensation, just a lot of, you know, ex-employees are collecting, and they collect for longer periods of time now under present administrations. This is what happens. It's not a significant number. It goes from nine thousand to fifteen thousand, but the percentage goes up. Also, insurance, which is your property damage and liability insurance, is, is up. It's up fifteen percent. We are, we do have a competitive bid out right now, or a request for bids. We're not getting good feedback. There's only, you know, there's only one or two carriers that carry municipalities of our size and for the risk. So, you know, we had one before, and now we have the other one, and now we're going back to the old one, asking for a bid. So we haven't gotten the final word from them yet, but fifteen percent is the, what is being quoted right now for the three-year policy, fifteen percent per year. So that's a significant increase. When you compound that out, that's fifty percent increase or better.
Thirty-two percent over the last two years.
Yeah, and it keeps going.
And it keeps going.
And it keeps going.
Right.
Liability and property damage, it's significant, so. It, you know, it's a result of, more than likely, all the superstorms that we had. We had a, what, four years, we had two or three big storms. So it's a result of that. The Connecticut coastline is not getting favorable rating. The way around it is true.
Would you say that some of the recent liability issues that we've had may have also increased that number?
Trying to think of any. Such as the Torrance situation? No, we didn't make a claim, did we? No, no claim. It was boardwalk, we had two claims on the boardwalk, and both insurance companies paid out. So the one we have now made a significant claim, and then the one we had prior who were asking for a bid now, which is, you know, we're in a funky situation, you know, it's like asking somebody who racked up three cars to get a cheap price on car insurance, you know? It's tough to get that. So, yeah, we made, you know, made some claims on the, on storm damage, not just the boardwalk, but we've, we had seawalls, and we had beaches.
It's mostly-
We had parking lots destroyed, so, yeah.
Property claims.
Property claims and, and major liability? Any liability claims?
We had the pump station.
Yeah, the pump station up by the bridge here. We had a huge, huge claim there. You know, major disaster there, so. And that all comes in this rating period, so that's why we're seeing that bump as well.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll move to contingency, 120.
Contingency is out there. Simply the town payroll pending PR change, as you know. Again, third time tonight, three out of four of our unions are going into renegotiation or into negotiation, so there's a contingency there for payroll increases. We wouldn't give that to departments until we know what the percentages are. So we put a chunk of money into the payroll pending PR change. Correct?
Why is that so much more than last year, though?
We didn't have any negoti, we-
Oh, we didn't negotiate a contract?
We didn't negotiate, we negotiated, I think, one contract last year, this three, that are big question marks right now. We don't know what we'll be paying them come, come July 1st.
And one of the three bargaining groups is our largest bargaining group in town. It's over sixty employees.
Sixty?
Sixty, it's about sixty-five.
So we knew this time last year what, like, that group was getting, so it wouldn't have shown up here, it showed up in their wages, in the individual departments. So it's not like, last year we only had seventy-five thousand dollars of increases in wages, and this year is a hundred and, two-hundred-and-eleven thousand. All that was in individual departments in the wage lines. Forty-five thousand dollars of this two-eleven is state, resident state trooper salary increase, anticipated increase. As you know, we're, they're going from a seventy percent funding to, we need to go from a seventy percent funding to a hundred percent, based on the governor's budget, and that hasn't, you know, there's rumors that that might change. But right now, the budget, the way it is, it's, we're gonna be expected to fund about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars for the resident state trooper, including benefits, I believe, somewhere in that neighborhood. It's a forty-five thousand dollar increase.
Yes, I'm the, on the operating contingency. So I went back and I looked at what we appropriated out of this account last year. Some of it was for police radios, a portion of it was for some payroll adjustments. So we're in a new budget season, and we should be budgeting for whatever these departments think they're going to need in the upcoming year. But also out of that one-thirty last year was the fifty thousand dollar settlement for Torrance. So I'm not, are we anticipating any other lawsuits this year that may have to be settled?
I, um, no. Not lawsuits, but are we anticipating a need at some point with a, with a forty-two-thousand, million-dollar budget that there might be a need for extra money, contingency, if you will? So if something comes up, it was nice to have that fifty when we needed it. And if it doesn't get used appropriately, it goes back to the town, goes back to-
So the one-forty-five is based on the one, one percent best practice?
Is that what it was? Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's just, you know, it's not a slush fund. It's not, it's not the first selectmen's fund. It, we take it, I think it always comes before the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance when we use that money. So it's always, you know, we're not writing checks out of that fund. We come to you if we need to use that money. So that's, that's a good point, and it's a good question.
So Anna, of that one-thirty or eighty after that settlement, how much is coming back as a surplus?
I think the current balance is about twenty-eight thousand. There is a request before the Board of Selectmen at their meeting this week to use some of those funds, though.
It's, it's there.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to capital.
Do you have an updated capital?
Seven-twenty-four.
Did we make any changes today?
Capital.
Yeah.
If you can look at the spreadsheet, it should go to the, the, the point.
I'm gonna have you explain it. How's that? We did make changes today, though, right?
This is the question.
Okay.
Do you want me to go over it?
Yeah, would you please?
Okay. All right, so there's also a spreadsheet that goes with what's currently proposed. It looks like this. It would be in back of the department summary.
It's the last page, right here.
Yep.
Yeah, so the first account, which is CNRE Municipal, these are items that we, we fund and we transfer the funds to CNRE to build up, to be able to do certain things, of which is included the CAD software and survey equipment that the engineering department uses. Fifty, we put fifty thousand a year in for roof projects. We, this year, were able to do the much-needed roof repair on this building. The next building, the town building in line, is the community center. That building is over twenty years old, and it's, you know, approaching the time. We also have funding that we put aside for HVA replacement townwide. There's, you know, always issues in the buildings, and that's what these funds are used for. We set up a reserve for sidewalk repairs townwide. Then we also set up a reserve to have some funding available in the event that something comes up during the year that we had not planned for. We're also requesting forty thousand dollars, which would be to pay for the equipment for the police vehicles that we plan to purchase through the acquisition program. We have just found that it's more efficient to be able to pay outright for the equipment pieces, because we're dealing with oftentimes multiple vendors. And then- And then, we have two hundred and two thousand in for our next revaluation. We currently have approximately ninety-three thousand set aside and we expect for that to come in at um, about two hundred and ninety-four, two hundred and ninety-five thousand. We're actually in the um, stages of developing the RFP for, for us to do this.
Now, this, this revale coming up is, is a drive-by, not a go-visit-the-houses.
It's more of a statistical, that's correct.
So if we're expecting two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars to pay for that, what do we expect five years from now when we, when we have the go-visit-the-houses? What does one of those cost?
We're looking at a half a million dollars.
Half a million.
If I could ask a question about the, what the state requirements are more specifically. So i- it's every five years is a statistical, and then every ten is a physical?
Well, no, just they break it up, physical, statistical, then physical.
Yeah, every five years is one or the other.
Yeah. I think it's four, but can't they give you a year extension if you, I'm not sure.
Is that something that gets bid out?
Oh, oh, yeah, yes, oh, yeah.
Remember, last time we worked with Waterford on it, so we used the same, one year apart, so they came here, they did ours and then jumped over to Waterford.
And we're planning on doing that again.
We got some economies to scale on a package.
CIP?
Yeah, so, so the next, um, the next account, um, town CIP, we, we only have one item in that this year, and that's for the ongoing um, GIS system. You'll notice, um, in the current year, we're over seventy thousand and um, last year, we expended approximately fifty-seven thousand. This year, we were able to um, utilize the LoSIP allotment that we received to get any projects that would come in and require funding in this account, so. And of course, we have um, townwide computer equipment, we have two items there. One is fifteen thousand for um, our on, annual ongoing um, computer replacement in the upcoming fiscal year. Um, that money will actually go for servers. We're in a position now where uh, we need to replace some of the service that we have. And then, we're looking at the possibility of um, a new telephone system, but we would include that in the acquisition program. So sixty works, we're estimating approximately sixty-three hundred a year for the um, payments for that system.
Anna, could I ask you to go back to minus one hundred a minute?
Yes.
If we look at, well, let's say four forty-three, if we look at this year's budget of four forty-three, minus two oh two for the revale, that puts us at two forty-one. Over last year's, one eighty-nine. I don't have last year's detail. E- can you characterize for us what the difference is? Do you know?
You know what, I don't have that information with me this evening. However, I can bring it to um, our next meeting and go over that.
That'd be great.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh, well, I had to make myself a note, so I don't forget. Um, okay, so, um, then moving on, um, the next account is um, for the Parks and Rec Acquisition Program. So that would be a combination of existing payments that we have and anything new that we would acquire. There are a couple of items in this year's, uh, the upcoming year for Parks and Rec. Um, one is uh, the sharing of the, was that the mini excavator? Yes, the mini excavator, that is slated to be shared by um, Parks and Rec, Public Works, and the Water, Water Department. And they had, I think the other item was a leaf blower, if I'm not mistaken.
Ten thousand dollars for an overseeder.
The overseeder, okay. That's it. Commission on Aging, that is just remaining, uh, you know, the annual payment on buses that they have. Then next is um, Niantic Fire Department, and there is the um, repayment on the Scott Air Packs and the chief's vehicle, uh, so those are already, um, there's nothing new there. Flanders Fire is for turnout gear, I believe, four sets. And Police, we have existing acquisition payments and uh, proposed new. And in the proposed new, there are two um, patrol cars and uh, the plan as it, as it sits before you in the budget is also including a new um, detective vehicle. And then the um, next would be Emergency Management. There's payments on the simulcast radio system as well as the um, the new vehicle they have, that's an acquisition, um, acquisition payment. And Public Works, the five hundred and, um, three thousand, that is, those are all acquisition payments um, between existing ones and what's new in the hopper for the upcoming year. The twelve thousand is for recycling carts, we do need to replace some of them every year. And we also always look to get a new snowplow every year, so, um, that's pretty much.
So on the, on the truck act, of the five hundred thousand, or five oh three, what, a hundred and thirty of that is new equipment they're asking for?
Yes.
Right? Okay. I just wanna know I got those numbers right. If we go back to the Police, the new portion of that is, with the laptops, what, thirty-four, thirty-five thousand?
Laptops, fifteen thousand if not.
Yeah, the laptops.
I'm just, I'm looking at the, the, the two vehicles and the laptops. So of that, a hundred and ten for round numbers, thirty, thirty-four, that's new, right? The other stuff's existing.
Right.
Okay.
You got the latest one of those?
I think so, yeah.
Sixteen, okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, when we say we're adding a hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year, that's for the first payment in, in the next five years.
That's correct.
So that hundred and thirty thousand will follow us for the next five years.
Yes, that's correct.
I would uh, really like to see somebody's priorities for these new vehicles. Whoever, whoever wants the new vehicles, I'd like to see what their priorities are. I mean, we're doing a dump truck, we're doing two new pickup trucks, we're doing.
One, I think, pickup on the, on the Public Works side. There was some changes, we had a CIP meeting this afternoon, and I'm.
But we have to talk about how it's currently.
We have to talk about how it is, man, so we can't make changes.
Well, during their deliberations, they can make changes.
Okay.
Okay, I'd just like to.
We have prioritized.
I would like to see a priority.
We've made some.
Thank you.
Decisions on a few.
Alright, so we're gonna revisit this, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Well, during deliberation.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we will move to the Board of Education. We'll vacate. Department nine-nine-nine.
Are we recording? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Shut down? No? So, wait, so we're sitting?
Alright, let's revisit this.
I love the handwriting. You couldn't do the doctor. Now, is this enrollment? Okay, okay, great, thank you.
You good? Got all the paperwork? Okay. Okay, good evening, um, I'm Tim Hagan, the Chair of East Line Board of Education. And uh, thanks for having us come and present our budget and our thoughts around that. Obviously, our, our Superintendent will do a considerable amount of the hard work this evening. But I did wanna just make a couple of, a couple of remarks and comments. Uh, first of all, we've got some board, some of our board members are here, Al Littlefield, Rob Coopas, Harba Sengas, anybody else? A few of our board members. And uh, we have several of our administrative teams here, um, ranging from principals to our curriculum directors, um, and alike, to help Dr. Lombardo with uh, answers and, and uh, hopefully answers to your questions and embellishment on the, on the budget proposal. There are a few new faces that we have here, oh, Candace just walked in, hi Candace, she's another board member. Uh, Donna Gittleman is our Assistant Superintendent, Interim Assistant Superintendent, uh, for Special Education. And so she's here, um, and as you notice, there's one person that's not here who has been a landmark figure for ten years, that's Don Meltebarger. And we recently hired a new business manager, Maria Whalen, she's sitting back there. But I don't think she's ready to answer any, any questions yet, so. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep, she's been on the job for about a week, so. And uh, one other person I'd like to introduce to you, um, and in two days, uh, will be our new Superintendent, and that's Jeffrey Newton. Uh, and Jeffrey will begin on April first, which we had a lot of deliberations about whether that was a good idea to start on, on that day. But seeing as it's my mother's birthday, we decided, I decided that it was a good thing to do. I think that that has, I think I covered the uh, introductions and so forth, and hopefully you'll hear a little bit from not only Dr. Lombardo, but from our, uh, all the administrative team. Did you see the article in the day with Dr. Lombardo? That was really nice. Uh, I thought that was a very good interview. Certainly captured a lot of the hard work and effort that Jim has put in to the district here for the last six years. And uh, we certainly have been having a good time in bidding him uh, all the best in, in his upcoming retirement. Although I don't think he'll really retire, I think he's just gonna go on and, and do something a little bit different. But in the world of education, I certainly hope so. I think that article showed uh, the edge that we have in East Line. And when Jim and I collaborated and put together this little memo that we sent to you, and we, we vetted it with the, with the board as well, um, we used, we lifted uh, information, really, or perspective, from our high school seniors um, uh, that are editors on the uh, on the Viking Saga. And again, that they really were talking about maintaining the edge that we have in education in, in East Line. And, and that, I think, is, is an absolutely critical thing uh, that we have done over the years and we continue to do as a, as a community. As always, the tough part is making sure that we hit the right balance in funding uh, the, the educational programming that we have while being, you know, physically responsible to our community and to our taxpayers. But I think that one of the things that's really important is that if we have a strongly motivated, engaging faculty, administrative team, an entire staff within our district, that becomes a very, that becomes one of the big elements of maintaining this edge that we have in education. And through that, we need to give commitment to the staff, to the administrative team, uh, in their efforts. And I believe, as Jim's gonna get up here and, and walk you through the budget numbers and everything, um, I believe that our, our administrative team has sincerely done their very, very best in bringing forward a proposal. And with board deliberations, I think the board has, has also done their, their task in trying to bring forward that right uh, balance between assuring the quality of the educational system while also being physically responsible to the community. So, with that, Jim, I'll ask you to come up and, or you want, if you wanna do it from there. So I'll just do a brief presentation from here and then I'll sit down with all my paper to answer any specific questions you might have. It's kind of interesting, uh, being in my last twenty-nine hours as a Superintendent of Schools.
But who's counting?
I am. And in my last board meeting ever, it gives me a chance to reflect on a number of things. I shared with some folks last week that I did a, a rough approximation of the number of hours that I've spent in board meetings in my career as a Superintendent alone, not counting as a principal, et cetera. But just as a Superintendent, when I add it all up, if I had been a, in a board meeting for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, twelve months a year, I would have spent um, two years and seven months sitting in a boardroom at a board meeting of one kind or another.